It's 8:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. We have an agenda in front of us. Are there any additions to that agenda? And I don't believe there are any, so I'd be looking for a motion to adopt agenda. Mr. Christie?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Christie to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Okay, we also have the regular council meeting minutes from May 14th that have been pre-circulated. Are there any errors or omissions to that? Okay, seeing none, Counselor Keever.
I move the approval of the May 14th council meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 14th. Counselor Keever moved. All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, we're going to move on then to, on our agenda, to item 5.11, Transportation, Linden East Micro Surface Application. Brad, when you are ready, please.
Morning, Council. This morning, we're bringing you an RFD for the Linden East Micro Surface Application along with Range Road 254. The Linden East Road to 21 and 254 from 30-4 to 310 was approved in the 2019 capital budget. Tenders for the project closed on May 10th. This project was tendered with the Swalwell Cape Seal project to potentially give us some cost savings. The approved budget was $925. The qualified tender came in at $948,497, or $23,497 over budget. There has been considerable deterioration of the township 30-4 over the last year, and additional repairs, the amount of $38,501, are required prior to the micro surface application. However, the Swalwell Cape Seal project came in $123,157 under budget as the need for the chip seal repairs were less than anticipated, so. Both projects are funded through the transfer from an operating funds. So recommendations to council is that council approve the additional funds required for the Linden East project for the amount of $23,497. Additional funds required to be funded from the surplus realized from the Swalwell surface project. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Brad. Are there any questions for Brad?
Brad, what are the additional $38,501 required on 30-4? We have additional repairs. Are you doing a deep patch where it's sinking down on that about a mile west right from 21?
Counselor Hugo, yes, there's that spot, plus numerous other spots, along with 254, the Chip Seal Road known as the Nursing Home Road. That has significant damage done over the last winter in the deep frost. So I think there's four spots on the Linden Road itself and three on the Nursing Home Road, along with we are doing a mill at the railroad tracks to go back and taper that back so it doesn't drop in. We are doing a couple of different tracks in the county, milling that out so the transition's a lot smoother to go across there, so that was added into this too, so. You hate to spend that money on a, that much on a road and then still have a big bump right at the tracks, so.
For that one, for the by the railroad tracks, are you waiting on CN Rail to work with you on those?
Counselor Hugo, yes, we, that's after the contractor to make that with CN, so CN's got to provide track protection for that day that they mill that out. Anything around rail tracks, we have to give notification, as you know, dealing with AT before, and CN or CP Rail, they have their own police department. They will sic them after us if we don't listen to them, so it's usually, three hills is pretty good. We stop at the, at the station here in town. They usually need two, three days to give us that track protection of someone just standing on the line and telling us to get off, the train's coming. We know there's, you know, anywhere from four to five trains per afternoon. Along down at Linden, we have the rail siding there, so it gets fairly busy, so.
Once again, no, I don't envy you on that one. We dealt with those guys. I hope your contractors are ready to work 24 hours, because that's usually the way CN does it, like at midnight or 1 o'clock, so. Okay, all right, no, that's very good. Thank you, Brad.
Brad, can you elaborate a little bit more on what cap seal means in Swalwell?
Counselor Penner, so the Cape Seal there, so that's a chip seal bottom with a micro on top, so it's like a double chip. So right now, what's there is a chip seal only, so. I'm going to say six, if not seven years ago, is when that chip seal was put in there. Majority of it's still good. There's a section along the 30-2 going, it would be east of Whacker Avenue. That's going to be a new chip seal there to the boundary outside of town. And then there's a few spots here and there that they're going to fix, and then they're going to micro over top of everything, so. And then at the same time when they're in here, they're doing some additional repairs that were needed in Huxley and Torrenton from last year's job, so.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Boogert? If not, if not, you see the recommendation that's in front of you that we move, approve the additional funds required for the Linden East project, and that we use those funds, the surplus funds from the Swalwell project to make that happen. So what is council's desire? Ms. Penner?
I move that council approve the additional funds required for the Linden East Road project in the amount of $23,497, and the additional funds required to be funded from the surplus realized from the Swalwell surfacing project.
Okay, so we have a motion based on the recommendation from our Transportation Department. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor? Okay, that's carried. Thank you, Brad. Didn't make it too hard for you, I hope. Okay, moving down in our agenda. We are at the Okay, moving down in our agenda, we are at the item five point three point one, Town of Troschu and Neehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan. Of course, I'm going to have to excuse myself, because I have a pecuniary interest here, and so I would be looking for a motion from council to approve an alternate chairman. Mr. Hugo, please.
Yes, Mr. King, I'd like to nominate Wade Christie as Chair, Chairman of the Meeting, for the IDP for five point three point one.
Okay, so we have a motion from Counselor Hugo to appoint Counselor Christie as the Chairman for this portion of the meeting. All those in favor? And that is carried, so if you'll excuse me.
Okay, I guess we turn it over to Barb now.
Good morning, Council. This is a request for decision regarding the Town of Troschu and Neehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan. In the spring of two thousand eighteen, amendments to the Municipal Government Act came into effect, including the requirement for all municipalities who share a boundary to work together to adopt an intermunicipal development plan. The purpose of these plans is to foster a collaborative planning approach for lands along the common border between the two municipalities. This will ensure that certain identified areas are viewed with regional perspective. By implementing a plan that contains both guidelines for future uses, as well as agreed dispute mechanisms, urban and rural municipalities can reach agreement without negative impacts on either municipality. From the perspective of both municipalities, enhanced management of the land within the IDP area identified will prove advantageous for the long-term interests of the municipalities and their residents. A proposed draft was created, and this was done in, in a conversation with the Town of Troschu administration as well, and the assigned committee from both Neehill County and the Town of Troschu have met to review and revise the proposed draft. The draft has been attached and is the outcome of this review. I do wanna comment, on Friday, we did get a call from the town, and they had a concern with the map of a couple of pieces of land that were internal to Troschu, and they just wanted to make some small alterations to the map, so that it reflected the uses in their land use bylaw. So Carolyn and I have put it up here, if we wanna flip it, and I'll just, so the map that you have in your package has been slightly edited, so this will be the map that is now being approved. It's, it's right here. Anyway, there are a couple of small pieces that they have, as, in their land use bylaws, more residential uses, and I think in the map that we had originally drafted, they were more aligned for commercial or industrial, so we will make sure that you guys have a copy of that edited. I guess we can't make it come up right now. Anyway, the draft notes, this draft notes the following: "It provides a framework for collaboration when developing lands within the IDP area. It promotes open communication between the town, county, public, and interested stakeholders. It promotes respect for each other's jurisdictional autonomy and integrity. It provides a framework for the provision of services and infrastructure required for the joint planning area that demonstrates an equitable, efficient, and proactive approach. It is a guide to collaboratively plan for lands within the IDP area that will promote opportunities for residential, commercial, industrial, and economic development while minimizing land use and environmental impacts. The next step in this process is to provide an opportunity for public comments and feedback, which is why we are requesting that we do first reading, and that we move to schedule a public hearing." So the recommended action is, as I've stated, council move first reading of bylaw seventeen ninety-seven, and council move to schedule the public hearing as per section six oh six of the Municipal Government Act to be held on June twenty-fifth at ten a.m.
Any questions, Barb, before we carry on? The main thing the committee reviewed was wording and, but basically, a collaboration of communication and stuff, so that everybody knows where things are at. Pretty, not boilerplate, but almost.
And these are very general documents, like, just for clarification, land use bylaws on both sides will still prevail when it comes to actually specific uses and what would be allowed. It's just really regarding notification, and when you might potentially impact somebody on the other side of that boundary, how they collaborate as far as addressing those things.
So we're looking for a motion for the first reading, I guess. Mr. Keever?
I move first reading of bylaw seventeen ninety-seven.
Or with the amended maps that we haven't seen yet.
Sorry, oh, recent. They're very minor. Oh, yeah, if you wanna pull the current one, I can pull on that. Maybe my pointer works. Okay, my pointer doesn't work, but, so the biggest change is, there's a piece of land that's just, the pink area, that's south of Highway five eighty-five, that would be inside of Troschu, so, and you'll see there's a little subdivision out of that. So that land, basically, the pink line just goes straight across. Yeah, I don't have a mouse. John, give me a point. Okay, so, this piece right here stays pink, and below this stays yellow, and then the other piece in their land use bylaw is this one, so this piece up here is split, and this east side is yellow, so that's more residential, and this will be highway commercial, so half. So that's the only two changes, so you have this piece right here is split now, south half will be residential, the north half will be commercial on the highway, and then this piece is split east-west.
So with Glenn's motion with the amended maps, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Carrying on, the date is the next motion? Does that work for everybody? Counselor Hugo?
I move that we, that we schedule the public hearing for bylaw one seven nine seven, as per section six oh six, six oh six of the Municipal Government Act, to be held on June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, at ten a.m.
There we go. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carry.
Thank you, Mr. Christie, for your capable assistance with that matter. We'll continue on in our agenda. We'll move on to five point three point two, which is the Three Hills Cruise Weekend, Use of the Airport for Bracket Racing, and Barb, are you bringing that?
You bet.
Okay, please.
So over the past seven years, the Three Hills Cruise Weekend has included a one-eighth mile bracket racing event at the Three Hills Airport. This year, the Three Hills Cruise Weekend Committee wishes once again to host this extended cruise weekend event at the Three Hills Airport on Saturday afternoon, June first, and Sunday, June second, two thousand nineteen. Section four of the amusement bylaw, also known as the Outdoor Festival Control bylaw, allows a municipal administrator, upon receiving written application in such form as shall be from time to time prescribed by resolution of council, he may authorize the holding of amusements, entertainments, or athletic contests of any kind or description in a public place. The Cruise Committee has made a formal request in Neehill County Council to authorize the holding of this event at the Three Hills Airport. Bracket racing or any racing event is not listed, not a listed use within the agricultural district of the land use bylaw, and neither is it pursuant to any aviation or federal aviation uses. The committee's request letter has outlined the risks, are mitigated with proper insurance, there are sanctioned inspections, and the site emergency plan has been reviewed with all event coordinators. The emergency plan, as provided to council by the organizing committee, is well conceived and consistent with similar sanctioned events held in Alberta. So the recommended action is that council, Neehill County Council, to prescribe by resolution to authorize the holding of the eighth mile drag race at the Three Hills Airport.
Okay, so you have heard the request and the background information. What's your wish? Counselor Christie?
I move to consent to drag racing event being proposed at Three Hills Airport on Saturday, June the first, Sunday, June the second, nineteen nineteen, on Three Hills Cruise Weekend Committee that requested the insurance coverage and emergency plan, with the required insurance.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Christie to approve our consent to the drag racing event. Any question or comments? Mr. Keever?
And I'm, I'm assuming they've had those conversations, that's, I'm not aware of.
I think the notification is probably late to us, but not anybody else.
Yeah. I think it was just a oversight this year.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, would someone care to make a motion? Sorry. Thank you. Wade already has made that motion, yes. Okay, no more comments. All in favor? And that's carried. Steve and I lost track, we got so involved in the air traffic control thing. I was thinking, earlier, we needed to talk air traffic control on the Linden East paving project at the railroad. A lot of people get airborne there. All right, we are gonna move down to new business, then. Oh, sorry, no, we're not, we're gonna go to four, five point four, which is Agriculture Service Board, Weed and Pest Inspector, and Soil Conservation Officer. Mr. Bowen, Glosson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. So this is the Weed and Pest Inspector and Soil Conservation Officer appointment. In compliance with the Alberta Agricultural Service Board Act, Weed Control Act, Pest Control Act, and the Soil Conservation Act, inspectors shall be appointed through council motion to legally carry out all duties and responsibilities as outlined within the Acts. Below are excerpts from the legislation regarding inspector appointments. The Weed Control Act, municipal inspectors, "A local authority shall appoint inspectors to enforce and monitor compliance with this act within the municipality. Under the Agricultural Pest Act, inspectors may be appointed by a local authority or by the minister to carry out this act and the regulations. Under the Soil Conservation Act, the local authority of a rural municipality shall appoint at least one soil conservation officer for that municipality." This is required under provincial law, and it is therefore legislated. The recommended action is that council appoint Taran Metzger as Weed and Pest Inspector and Soil Conservation Officer for Neehill County. Council's options are, the council appoints, for the term of their employment, with Neehill County, Taran Metzger as Weed and Pest Inspector and Soil Conservation Officer for Neehill County, as per the Alberta Weed Control Act, Agricultural Pest Act, and Soil Conservation Act. The other option is council receives this information.
Thank you, Bowen, appreciate that. Okay, we have the recommendation that Taran Metzger could be appointed. What's your wish? Mr. Hugo?
Just a quick question to the Chair. Metzger's rent my land, so should I excuse myself from voting?
I don't believe that would be required. You have no financial interest, one way or the other, in this decision, so I think you're okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Someone care to make a motion?
I move that council appoints, for the term of their employment, within Neehill County, Taran Metzger as Weed and Pest Inspector and Soil Conservation Officer for Neehill County, as per the Alberta Weed Control Act, Agricultural Pest Act, and the Soil Conservation Act.
Thank you, Mr. Hugo. We have a motion in front of us, any question or comment? Mrs. Penner?
Were we having trouble finding someone to fill this position, Bowen? Is that why it's coming back now?
Yes, Counselor Penner, the, we had everybody hired, and then one of the, the potential employees, they found work elsewhere, so then we had to repost, and Taran ended up successfully getting that position, so this, this is the last one, but yeah, yeah, we, we had everybody, and it was looking good, and then, then surprise, yeah.
Life is full of those things called surprises. Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Taran Metzger as a Weed and Pest Inspector and Soil Conservation Officer for Neehill County. You ready for the question? All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Bowen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair and Council.
Okay, we're gonna move on, unless anyone feels the need for a break, we'll move on to new business. We have a request from the Neehill Historical Museum. So Laurie, please.
Good morning. We have a request from the Neehill Historical Museum for attendance. Administration received a request for attendance for the Reeve to attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Neehill Historical Museum and AVIP. The Neehill Historical Museum's opening day will be on June eighth, two thousand nineteen. On this day, they will also be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony at ten thirty a.m. for the Sunny Slope CPR Station House. Neehill County contributed four thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars through the Neehill County's Community Grants to Nonprofits program back in April two thousand nineteen to assist in building a wheelchair-accessible platform around the building. A short speech would also be welcomed by the person attending. The cost or source of funding for the attendance would be through the two thousand nineteen operating budget. Engagement is a directive decision with individual notification. Our link to the strategic plan, ensuring communications and engagement in our communities. Attachment, there is the letter received from the Neehill Historical Society. Recommended action is that council authorize the attendance of the Reeve. Other options are council authorize the attendance of a designate, or council receives a request for information.
Okay, thank you, Lori. We have the request in front of us. What are the desires of council? Mrs. Penner, Counselor Penner?
Quick question to the Chair. Is the Reeve available? Do we know that? But I guess it doesn't matter, we can make that motion, and then, and one of us can...
I think the motion, if we designate the Reeve or an alternate, would be fine.
Okay, Counselor Penner?
I'll make that motion, that we authorize the Reeve or a delegate, one of us to attend.
Okay, so Counselor Penner has made the motion that we authorize the attendance of the Reeve or alternate to attend the Neehill Historical Society's ribbon-cutting on June eighth, two thousand nineteen. Any further comment? Okay, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to Neehill County Urban Recreation Funding, to the Urbons for two thousand and nineteen, and Lori, I guess that's you again.
Yes, it is. Prior to the Neehill County Regional Resource Urban Sustainability Grant, Neehill County would provide recreation funding to our urban neighbors through the Recreation and Leisure Services Grant. The guidelines in this policy stated that the five urban centers would annually... The guidelines in this policy stated that the five urban centers would annually appoint a committee, two members from each, to determine the disbursement of funds by June 30 of each year and advise Neheel County. When the Neheel County Regional Resource Urban Sustainability Grant was canceled at the April 24, 2018 council meeting, council then approved $250,000 to be shared with our urban neighbors for recreation funding. The implementation of this grant was to be completed similar to the Recreation and Leisure Funding Grant. Neheel County approved in their 2019 operating budget $250,000 for urban recreation funding. Since there is no policy to provide administration guidelines on how to disperse the funds, administration is requesting direction for the 2019 budget year only. By March 31, 2020, municipalities will be required to have inter municipal collaborative, collaboration frameworks completed with neighboring municipalities. The ICFs will specify what and how services are funded and delivered. This means that recreation funding to our neighboring communities will be laid out in our ICF bylaws with our neighboring municipalities independently and budget accordingly. So our cost and source of funding for 2019 is in the 2019 operating budget. Engagement is a directive decision, individual notification, and public notification. Link to our strategic plan, providing good governance. Recommended action is that council direct administration to create a letter to our urban neighbors advising them that the $250,000 budgeted for recreation be shared amongst the towns and villages, and that the distribution of funds be decided collectively by the group. Our options are that council approve the distribution of funds be decided collectively amongst the urban municipalities. Number two, that council approve a different way to distribute the funds, or that council receives information.
Thank you, Lori, appreciate that. Okay, so we have in front of us a decision about the $250,000 budgeted for recreation to be shared with our urban neighbors. I don't think we want to be involved with any decision about who gets what and where, so we have a recommendation in front of us. Somebody have any comment or question, or care to make a motion? Council Hugo, or Council Kiefer. Council, I'm looking at you, and I'm listening to Jim.
I move that we direct administration to create a letter to our urban neighbors advising them of the $250,000 budgeted for recreation to be shared amongst the Town of Three Hills, Troschu, Carbon, Acme, and Linden, and the distribution of funds be decided collectively amongst the group.
Okay, thank you, Council Kiefer. Appreciate that. So we, we might have to. It's like when I'm talking to my kids, right? You go down the list till you get the right one, yes. So we have a motion that council direct administration to create a letter to our urban neighbors advising them that the $250,000 is budgeted for recreation, and that the distribution of those funds be decided collectively by the group. Any other question or comment? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. Those in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Thank you, Lori. Okay, we continue to move down to council and committee reports, which we have two, the Marigold Library and the Committee of the Whole Meeting from April 15. Anyone care to comment? Mr. Kiefer, Council Kiefer.
I don't think they want it out real badly, but the Marigold computer system has been hacked. All files have been tapped, and they're working with some big company to get it corrected.
There's never any good news, is there? Yep.
I don't know what you can get by hacking the library for a lot of reading.
Okay, so we have the Marigold Library, and then the Committee of the Whole Minutes from April 15. I guess I would be looking for a motion to receive those two reports for information. Council Penner.
I'll move to receive as information.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Penner to receive the council committee reports as presented for information. All those in favor? And that is carried, thank you. All right, I believe, do we have anything in a closed session today? I don't believe so. All right, so just take a pause here, Carolyn.
Would you like to do the council follow-up report? Okay.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, so the follow-up action list, item 11, and that's in front of you as well. Council Christie.
I'll make a motion to receive the council's follow-up action list as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Council Christie that we receive the May 28 council follow-up action list as presented. All those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, barring any other things we've overlooked. Council Kiefer would like to have a recess, to have a coffee break. The pace has been fast and furious, I'm aware of that. Is that an official request, or would you rather not? Okay, you have to have some fun, right? All right, I guess the last motion then would be motion to adjourn at 9:05.